August 9, 2011, held in the Cuyahoga County Justice Center, the first floor council Madam Clerk, will you call the roll? And this is Nikki Barnhill. She is our Assistant Clerk, and this is her first meeting of presiding.
Thank you, Madam President. Calling the roll, Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Greenspan.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Mr. Drummond.
Mr. Gallagher.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Here.
Ms. Conwell.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Connolly.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Will please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For a moment of silence this evening, I would like to reflect on the life of Salvatore Arcalandra. He was a judge at the Cleveland Municipal Court from 1972 until 1997, when he retired. He was a lifelong Clevelander and a pillar in the community of St. Rocko's Church, graduate of Cathedral Latin, John Carroll in Cleveland Marshall Law School. He was past president of the St. Vincent de Paul Society and part-time dishwasher at St. Rocko's Church. He was dearly loved by the citizens of that community, and we are the family of Cleveland Municipal Court, and he will be deeply lost. And Mr. Schron.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'd also like to ask for your consideration in your quiet moments for Sergeant Dennis, counselor, Sergeant Counselor, father of Nick, son of Dennis and Paula, Brexville High School graduate from 2003, served our country well in two tours in Iraq, and lost his life recently, and also spent his time over in Afghanistan as a Marine Special Ops. And with that, I would also want to recognize the tragedy that we just lost, those 30 young men in Iraq, as far as the helicopter, and ask if you would consider that in your thoughts and prayers tonight as we go into our moment of silence. Thank you.
Before we go into our public comment, we have one announcement we'd like to introduce, Ms. Eugenia Cash. Would you like to come up? Ms. Cash is here. She is the Representative from the Cleveland Metropolitan School District and will be our liaison, and she asked to be introduced, and we'll give her a short minute or so to make a few remarks. And we look forward to working with you, and so you will be our go-to person for the Cleveland Metropolitan School. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
She's a longtime friend, and we welcome you.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council President Connolly and fellow council members. Again, my name is Eugenia Cash, and I am the flexible content expert of human wear and external supports for the Cleveland Metropolitan School District. The Cleveland School District has been working very closely with Mr. Ivory and mostly with Mr. Bibb. We have been working on how we can better understand how the county can coordinate social services to drive positive development for our youth. Specifically presently, we've been working with Mr. Bibb in trying to look at the different programs and services where we can find gaps and how we can bridge those gaps and those relationships. We've been working with MICOM, we've been working with Family and Children First Council and other county entities, Department of Children and Family Services, to make sure that we have sound, doable services for our students as well as our families. Our CEO, Mr. Eric Gordon, is very committed to working with the county executive and county council on developing these opportunities, and we are striving to have the primary goal of the Cleveland Metropolitan School District is to become a premier school district in the United States of America. I thank you so much for supporting us. And Morris Wild, thank you for allowing me to come and introduce myself, and I look forward to us working together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last evening, Mr. Gallagher and I had the opportunity to attend the opening of the Cuyahoga County Fair, and I was very, very impressed. I had not been there for a number of years, and I'd like to make sure that all of the citizens watching, this is the, Mr. Gallagher said he had a blind date for me, and this is the person that he fixed me up with. And I think we have another picture of Mr. Gallagher and I and the county mascot for the fair, Kalina, who was there and walked us around, and one of Mr. Gallagher's constituents, Cassidy, who was in the parade with us. So I'd like to honor all of the awardees at the fair and really encourage people to go. It was really, it was really a nice fair. It runs through, it runs through August the 14th, Sunday, and we will attempt next year to have a meeting at the fair and a forum so that we could invite people to come in and sort of have a town hall meeting, and we'll figure out, maybe we can get some free tickets or something for our constituents. But we really encourage people to go out to the fair. It's really very worthwhile, and it's a valuable asset that we want to try and promote. Mr. Gallagher, do you have any comment about?
Madam President, I think the photos say enough.
Okay, all right.
Which way were you in there?
All right. We have the, did anyone sign in for a comment for matters related to the agenda?
No, Madam President, no one has signed in to speak.
Okay. We were going to ask Kalina, but she was tied up at the fair. We have the minutes of the meeting from July the 26th. Has everyone had an opportunity to read those minutes? And is there a motion to approve them?
Second.
A move by Mr. Greenspan and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the minutes are adopted. Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. I enjoyed those pictures, too. You know, we're about to redesign the county's website, and there will be pictures that will flash in a rotation when people go to the county website. So I'd like to, if you could get those to us, so we can put those in their rotation, that'd be great. A couple things, a few things. One is just following up on what was commented already about with the Cleveland Public Schools. We do recognize that it's impossible really to have effective social service strategies without involving CMSD. And we have been having a number of conversations, and I met with the new CEO, Eric Gordon, this past Friday, actually, and had a great conversation. Mayor Jackson also has been convening educational leaders from all of the area universities, and I know that we've had discussions about this amongst individual council people and myself and Justin, but this, I think we do need to, in the next week or so, really sit down and talk about what, how are we, how is the county going, how is the county council going to devise what our strategy is and how can we implement it? Because the city of Cleveland has a timeline that I think it makes sense for us to be a part of if we choose to be a partner with them. So that is rapidly approaching quicker than I thought it was even last time some of us have had discussions about it. A couple other things I wanted to mention. One is, we have been looking at ways that the county can promote health and wellness, both among our own employees and also as a matter of public policy countywide. We are going to start really consistently enforcing the smoke-free workplace regulations that exist now through state law that have not really been evenly applied across the county. So, for instance, starting really tomorrow morning, these things are going to be starting to be enforced more actively. So the smoking hut, which has existed in the atrium of the county building, is going to be dismantled tomorrow, and employees are going to be notified where it is appropriate to smoke and where it is not, and it is not appropriate to smoke on county, at a county facility. We also are trying to have a balanced approach in terms of trying to make smoking cessation programs available for county workers, so they will be receiving that information as well. We are also talking to local healthcare institutions in the city of Cleveland, who launched their Healthy Cleveland initiative earlier this year, and we would like to jointly with them promote some programs also through the County Board of Health, that we've been working with Terry Allen from the County Board of Health, about programs that we can roll out to cities all across, all across the county. So if the council would like us to make a presentation to the relevant committee about what we're working on and any suggestions you might have, we're more than amenable to that. Two other things I wanted to mention to you that are becoming ripe for discussion, I think. One is, I wanted to let the council know that, as you know, we were beginning a process to, excuse me, examine all of our county-owned or leased properties. There are more than 40 of them across the county, and we have now gone through an RFP process, and we have chosen a consultant. We have put them on a very tight deadline to analyze the situation and come back with practical steps for implementation of that. I expect to have it before the end of the year, and then I'd like to act on it. It will cover everything from the very high-profile properties that we all know and love, like the Ameritrust complex or our county administration building, to ones that you may not even know that we own or lease space at. I also want to let you know that our loaned executive program that we've used to help us develop and implement policy has really paid off in this whole process. And they confirmed what we suspected, which was that the whole system, it really is in disarray in terms of how many properties we have, where they are, how they're maintained. We're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars that we can't afford on rent, maintenance, utilities. I think there's going to be significant savings here. So I know there's been a lot of focus on how we're trying to save money with personnel. This is another huge area where we can save millions of dollars, I believe. So if you're, if council members are interested in the process we went through or the proposal that's been made by this company or what the process is going to be, Bonnie T. Nguyen and her group of folks can provide you that information in as much detail as you would like. The selection process included loaned executives. So one of the problems, I think, that the county had was, these decisions are so complicated. When you're talking about, how do you deal with Ameritrust? How do you deal with the county administration building, what the value of that building is, and do you do some kind of a land swap? And these are very complicated real estate questions that usually somebody within county government is really not qualified to make. So that's one reason that we included folks from the private sector with a lot of commercial real estate experience on the selection, in the selection process, and they all participated in the ranking of the consultant that ended up winning the contract. So I think that the process so far has already been an improvement over what the county did previously. Of course, the real proof is going to be what the final outcome is. Another big decision that we have to make, all of us, is how we're going to handle our healthcare delivery for our own employees in the next few years. County has a consulting firm that they've used for a couple different years, and we kind of challenged them to be more aggressive and more creative about options for county employees in terms of what's available and if there's any healthcare savings that we could wring out of the current system. And those recommendations have started to be made, and I want to include the council in getting that information to you as quickly as possible because it's a large contract, and it's ultimately going to be a contract that the council is going to have to deliberate upon. And so Jim Dustin is our consultant, and I want to make him available again to the council to provide that information. It's very complicated, there's a lot of permutations and intricacies to it, but the good news is, there are a number of options that will not, in my opinion, adversely affect the healthcare, the actual healthcare that county employees will receive, but we can do it in such a way that, again, we'll save millions and millions of dollars. And I don't mean just a couple million, I mean a significant amount of money. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to act on this sometime this year. So I will look forward to providing that information to you in whatever context you would like, whether council people want individual meetings or whether you want to do it through the committee process. It's up to council.
I'm thinking that we can do the real estate, the public works, you can give an update and check with Mr. Jones and see when he's got an item on, you know, sometime on his, and those of us who want to attend can attend. And then also on the healthcare with Ms. Conwell's committee, you know, stay in touch with her, and you can probably, the best thing to do is give a report at the committee, and if it gets, if it gets more significant, then we can have it at the work session.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Item A, consideration of a motion of counsel for first reading adoption under suspension of the rules, Rules 9, Ryan D., and 12A. Ms. Simon, are you making the motion?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Any discussion? All those in favor, just indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item A 0042, Madam Clerk.
Motion 2011 0042. A motion appointing individuals to serve on the Cuyahoga County Soldiers and Sailors Monument Board of Trustees, declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective. William Shoal, Michael Slawinski, Ivy Washington-Marshall, and Michael Winston.
Move to that.
Second.
A move by Mr. Rogers and seconded by Mr. Schron. Ms. Conwell, did you want to be heard on this?
Yes. I wanted to give a brief history on how we came about these names. The county exec appointed eight individuals originally to serve on the Soldiers and Sailors Monument Board of Trustees, but the ORC, the Ohio Revised Code, stated that the authority was placed in the council's authority. So a process, we began a process to ensure that we comply with the statutory obligations. So we posted it on our website, and we got more candidates that wanted to fill these positions. All the candidates, present members being served, as well as the county exec, as well as the council website, people that wanted to attend, all candidates were asked to express their position on three topics of concern. So they were invited to the Human Resources and Appointments Equity Committee on July 21st. Those three issues that we wanted all of them to comply with was acknowledgement of the importance of the public nature of service, including compliance with open public records and open meeting laws, as well as accept the fiduciary responsibility of board service, including appropriate oversight and account of public funds dedicated to the monument. Also, an issue of concern was commitment to a regular attendance at these meetings. To ensure a fair and equitable selection, each HRA committee member voted individually and tallied who they felt, as they were being addressed, of who they wanted to serve on the committee. All those names were passed on to our policy advisor, Joanne Gross, and she tallied those names. These four were the unanimous four names that came out of that committee's election. So that's why we're here tonight, to pass those four names on. The four remaining positions that are open will be heard on August 18th in the Human Resources and Appointments Committee at 10:00.
And these are five-year terms, is that correct?
Five terms.
All right, any other discussion?
Question. So the remaining four seats that we have not, we're not going to be voting to fill this evening, are those subject to a term expiration? Will they, will the folks who are already on this board be able to fulfill their term, or is it cut short by these appointments?
No. Actually, what me and Joe Nani, our chief of staff, discussed this evening, the problem with all the appointments for the boards and commissions are, they're not number-selected. You need a number selected to each position, so when someone fills in or takes off, that will be able to, we will know who to fulfill, fulfill that position. So in the course of this week, I want to work with Joe Nani to decide on how we're going to come up with a system for that, for all, not just soldiers and sailors, but any, any boards and commission. Because if someone steps down or dies or something like that, we have no record in the past of how this has been transpired, so.
Well, yeah, because you know how it's like, when a judge is, like, the term commencing January the 2nd, so she wants to assign numbers, but the people who are already on the board, they're still, those are, they're still on, and there's still, what, four more seats?
Four more seats.
Right, they have to be filled, and those are shorter terms.
Right. But you also have the stipulation if they're veteran or non-veteran, so all that is taken, taken into consideration.
So the sitting board members' terms, they'll fulfill their terms, existing terms. So any new appointments we make will be effective after the expiration of that particular term.
Yes. Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of these four individuals for appointment to the Swords and Sailors Board of Trustees indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. We'd like to congratulate Mr. Shoal, Mr. Slawinski, Ms. Ivy, and Mr. Winston. Item nine, consideration of a motion of counsel for first reading and referral to committee.
Motion 2011 0041. A motion confirming the county executive's appointment of Paul Jurcerson to serve on the Cuyahoga County Corrections Planning Board and declaring the necessity that this motion become immediately effective.
This matter will refer to the Human Resources Committee. Item 10, consideration of an ordinance of counsel for first reading adoption under suspension of Rules 9D and 12A. Ms. Simon.
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, all, any discussion? All those in favor of suspension of the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item 0040.
Ordinance number 2011 0040, and ordinance amending ordinance number 2011 0024 dated May 10, 2011, which amended previous Board of County Commissioners resolutions establishing charges payable for connection to the county's water and sewer supply facilities in County Sewer District Number 14 for the period December 30, 2010, through December 29, 2011, and County Council Ordinance Number 2011 0007, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
So moved. Second.
By Mr. Greenspan and seconded by Mr. Schron. Is there any discussion on this? Did you want to be heard, Mr. Greenspan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. This is a, this issue's actually become somewhat of a complicated issue, and I'd like to ask Madam President for our law director to explain and what's happened, but effectively what we're asking for is some language change in our original, our original ordinance, and it has to do with, with the process in which, the process in which we're able to do assessments. So if you don't mind, the law director can explain better than I can on this topic.
All right, Mr. McCove.
Sure, thank you, Madam President, Councilman Greenspan. What we're trying to do here is, something happened years back, and we're trying after the fact to deal with it in terms of the property owners, there was no assessment done, and there is no way to do assessment after the construction has happened. So there is a mechanism under the Ohio Revised Code that allows for payment in installments, to have the property owners pay for the connection in installments. The problem that we run into is really two issues. Number one, because it's not an assessment, the ability, you know, to enforce it, because it's not, it's not triggered until they fail to make a payment, and that's when it's certified to the auditor, and it's then a lien on the property and collected as if it were taxes, but that is not triggered until, until after they fail to make a payment. And then the other issue that we run into is a subsequent purchaser, a bona fide purchaser buying the property unaware of the situation and the payment plan and then being, stepping into it. So we wanted to find a way where the property owners could be helped, but we minimize, to the extent possible, the risk to the county. So we're following the statutory procedure, but we're also giving the department the ability to record mortgages, basically, the property owners would have to sign for it if they want the payment plan on the property, so this way at least there is a notice to the subsequent property owners. Now, in terms of priority on the, I mean, most of these people already have a first mortgage and a second mortgage properly, property on the land already, but at least no subsequent owner can claim that they didn't know about the process when they, when they acquired the land. It's, in many ways, allocating the risks, because, you know, what's the risk to the county right now is that you have properties that could be a nuisance that the Department of Health can take action on, so the county's stepping in to allow these connections to happen, but to do it in a way that, to the extent possible, minimize the risk and assure the repayment to the county.
All right, is there any other discussion on this matter? I think we dealt with this like the first night we were here, back in January.
Madam President, this has been a recurring, recurring issue in Olmsted Township. So we thought we had this resolved, and the prosecutor's office brought us to our attention that this is the proper protocol, so that's why it's before us again this evening.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, item 11, consideration of ordinances of counsel for first reading and referral to committee. Item 0036.
Ordinance number 2011 0036, and ordinance approving a biennial operating budget and capital improvements program, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Mr. Miller.
Madam President, this is the ordinance to establish a procedure for a two-year budget for Cuyahoga County. The title does not quite reflect the ordinance in that we're not approving a budget, but we're specifying the procedure, so I would like to move to amend the title of the ordinance to read. An ordinance establishing the procedure for adopting a biennial operating budget and capital improvements plan for Cuyahoga County with an annual update, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Second.
All right, seconded by Mr. Brady.
One of the two of us.
Do we need to act on that amendment, or can we just do it in committee?
We could vote on it here, or we could do it in committee, whatever.
Let's do it in committee.
Okay.
For the public, we had a discussion of this ordinance in the work session, and it is streamed live. If you want to go back and watch that, it's a fairly detailed explanation as to how this is going to work, and it was informative to all of us on council. So if anyone's interested in that, I would suggest that they, you know, go back and watch the work session, of course, if they wish to come to the finance committee. And when are we going to hear this in finance?
It will be heard on Monday, the 15th, this coming Monday, at 1:00 PM, right here.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Oh, no, this just goes to committee. All right, item 0039.
President, if we could just back up and note that Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Drummond have signed on as co-sponsors to that.
Okay.
I would like to as well. I'm going to vote. Amending the.
I thought we were going to just do that in committee. We'll do the amendment.
Amending committee.
We'll do the amendment in committee.
I realize you withdrew.
Refer to finance and budget?
Yes, refer to finance and budget.
Okay.
All right.
Please note that Mr. Greenspan is also co-sponsoring.
All right, anybody else want to be co-sponsor? All right.
My name.
0039.
Roger.
And that's Mr. Jones.
And Rogers, too?
Simon, too.
And out. And Connolly.
Okay.
All of us.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2011 0039, and ordinance establishing procedures governing the use by the county of alternate construction project delivery methods, including construction manager-at-risk, design-build, and general contracting project delivery methods for public construction projects, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
This matter will be referred to the Economic Development Committee. Did you want to?
President.
Yes, yes. Yes, Mr. Miller.
I'd like to ask that my name be added as a co-sponsor.
Okay. And Mr. Schron, did you want to be heard on this?
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. This is an exciting piece of legislation that's kind of come before. It's co-sponsored on the original application with the county executive, Ed Fitzgerald, myself. It truly is, when we talk about job-creating opportunity, this is going to be one of the first major pieces of legislation, I truly believe, or it's going to have an effect on, not only on the construction jobs as we see it in the near future, but also long-term wise, it's going to have a significant impact. We've got some, we think, some groundbreaking pieces of legislation that are going to be attached to this, and it's going to be a place where I believe Cuyahoga County will stand out again, out in front of everybody else in construction reform.
All right, thank you. All right, it'll be heard in the Economic Development Committee. Item 12, consideration of resolution for first reading adoption and suspension of the rules, Rule 9D and 12A. Ms. Simon.
President, I move that we suspend the rules.
Moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Gallagher. Is any discussion on suspension of the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item 0243.
Resolution number 2011 02- Resolution number 2011-0243, a resolution amending the 2011 annual appropriation measure by providing for additional fiscal appropriations for the general fund and other funding sources for appropriation transfers between budget accounts and for cash transfers between budgetary funds in order to meet the budgetary needs of various county departments, offices, and agencies, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Madam President?
Yes.
The, the most salient item contained in here is probably the dispute over the taxes on Whiskey Island.
Do you want to make a motion first, and then we'll discuss it?
Okay.
Moved by Mr. Miller?
I'll move to that.
A second by Ms. Simon. All right, Mr. Miller?
And I would like to ask if Director Rabino could come forward and bring us all up to date on the situation.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council.
Can I refer the council to page 53 of, it has the background material on it?
Matt Rabino, Office of Budget and Management. The item, being discussed as the first item, it's an additional appropriation for $681,000, and it might be more helpful if I start from the end and work backwards. We're requesting to appropriate funds in the amount of a tax bill that was paid for property that the county owns, at Whiskey Island, the Marina property specifically. And we are asking to appropriate general fund dollars to fund the payment of this, this tax bill for property taxes. It's a delinquent tax bill, technically. The fiscal manager from Public Works contacted us a week and a half ago, or two weeks ago, whenever we were working on this agenda, and they, they felt that it was time to go and expedite making this payment. It's been in dispute, I think, since 2005, so collection year 2005, right after the county purchased the Marina. There was an exemption, or a, or appeal, rather, filed to the Ohio Tax Board of Appeals for an exemption on the property because, per advice from, from legal counsel here at the county, there, there's case precedence for property such as this Marina that's owned by a public entity being exempt from property taxes. So it's been under appeal for over five years now, and the subsequent years, the tax bill was not paid. They've recommended that they, they wanted to pay the tax bill this cycle, so the, the cycle where taxes were due on July 14th, they wanted to go ahead and make this payment, clear the deck, so to speak. We've been told it's a long shot that we would even win this appeal and be granted to the exemption. If that does happen, they can file for refund and get the money back. So the payment was made on, I think, July 15th. We used another account to fund the payment temporarily. If this item is approved, we'll then adjust that expense to Risk and Properties budget in order to, to fund that payment. But we were, we were approached with a question and asked for a resolution to an issue. They want to get this tax bill paid, so this was the quickest way to expedite this payment and get it in the books, and that's why we're asking for the additional appropriation.
All right, any other questions? Hopefully, some of this $600,000 will come back to us from the state.
I've been told it's a long shot, Madam President, but who knows? Could see. If so, we will get the money back. The payment was made, and there was a memorandum placed in the payment file that it was done under protest, so that was laid in there as, as a placeholder in case of the remote chance that there is an appeal that is favorable to us, and it gets exempt. It was noted when the payment was made.
Mr. Greenspan?
Thank you, Madam President. This appeal, what's the process, and what, when might we expect a response?
Councilman Greenspan, I'm not too familiar with the, the appeal process. We're more on the, on the funding side. It's been several years where, basically, I think they file the claim with the State Board of Appeals. You know, I don't know the exact iteration of why it takes three or four years or longer to get an answer, or if you get an answer and you can keep reappealing, that I'm not 100% familiar with.
Right.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Rogers?
I just have a question for clarity. We're, we own the property, and we have not paid the taxes on the property to the county? Or is, who's the dispute with? The county or with the city, or?
Councilman Rogers, the, the appeal process is run through the State Board, but these are county property taxes. So yes, we are paying not just the county, but the city and the other overlapping tax subdivisions that they will be receiving, or they have received this, this, this tax money. So yes, in a sense, we will see some of that money back, but maybe about $100,000 of that is actually for property taxes levied by the county.
So was it the state that actually initiated this, or was it the school districts, or?
I'm not necessarily familiar. I do know that if you want to appeal, the, the tax nature of the property has to go through the State Board, and that's, that's where the process is right now. Why it takes so long, I'm not 100% clear why that is.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Simon?
To, to, Mr. Rabino, does, does this 681 number include penalties? Are we being penalized, and is their interest as part of this?
Councilman Simon, there were penalties accruing. The county treasurer abated the penalties and interest, since we did not pay it during the, the appeal process, but we were holding off because the, the nature of the appeal process. And I think the original tax bill was closer to 1.2 million, so by removing the penalties and interest, it brought down to that 680 figure.
Madam President, one more question. Given that this was not budgeted, and will this appropriation now impact other, other budgetary items that were in place?
Councilman Simon, this is in our second quarter projection, so it's, the number's in there, so we are projecting a surplus this year, and that surplus is inclusive of this additional expenditure. Not that it's a good thing that you have an unplanned expenditure, this is something that's been around for several years. In hindsight, it may have been better to have them pay the bill three or four years ago, and then hope for a refund after the appeal process runs its course.
Madam President?
Yes.
Question, is the, who's handling the appeal? Is it the?
It had been the county prosecutor. I don't know if the law department's been involved at all. And this, again, this was initiated back in 2005, so it's been several years.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Item 0244.
Resolution number 2011-0244, a resolution authorizing awards on RQ 19761 to various appraisers, each in the amount of $48,000 for 2012, six-annual reappraisal, and annual maintenance for the period August 15, 2011, through December 31, 2012, authorizing the county executive to enter into contracts consistent with said awards, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective. William J. Barnes, Ruth Lassiter, Nancy A. Price, Anthony Gober, and Erin Kovasik.
Who's that, Mr. Brady? Mr. Greens, removed by Mr. Greenspan and seconded by Mr. Jamana. Is there any discussion? I think Mr. Steen was going to make a comment on this.
Madam President, I have a question. Usually, in these items, we, we put an amount not to exceed, in this case, $48,000. Was that omitted here, or is this multi-month? This, looks like it goes over 15 or 16 months. Is that 48,000 per 12, on an annual basis, not to exceed? I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I think Mr. Steen can, can explain it.
Madam President, to the council member, that's $48,000 per contract. These were five of our real estate appraisers that would have been included in the first group we brought forward, but if you remember, we, we mentioned some had a tax lien issue, some had some paperwork problems. These are the last five appraisers that did not go with the first group that we discussed, I think, a few weeks ago. So we're asking to move them so we can get them on track with the rest of our appraisers. It's $48,000 per appraiser.
Madam President, that's for 16 and a half months' worth of work?
Correct.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Thank you. Item 0245.
Resolution number 2011-0245, a resolution proclaiming the month of August 2011 as Child Support Awareness Month in Cuyahoga County, Love and Support Complete the Child, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
All right, it's moved by Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Rogers, and I have an amendment to this bill. Inadvertently, it was left out, the wording. It is necessary that this resolution become immediately effective in order to ensure the timely recognition of this celebration and to continue the usual and daily operation of the county. Provided that this resolution receive the affirmative votes of eight members of council, this resolution shall become immediately effective upon the signature of the county executive. So I move to amend.
Second.
All right, so moved by Conley and seconded by Mr. Miller. Then we need to vote on the amendment first, is that correct? All right, all those, is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of amending say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the resolution is amended. All right, do we actually have, we have any discussion on this? I think we have, I think we actually have the, somebody should come forward. I think we actually have the resolution. Is Mr. Nanny here? Do we actually have it, the resolution?
Uh.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. I am Russ K. I'm the interim director for the Cuyahoga Support Enforcement Agency, and I'm here today for your kind consideration to request that August be declared as Child Support Awareness Month in Cuyahoga County. And the theme, as you see on the resolution, is this year, is Love and Support Complete the Child, a theme which recognizes and celebrates parents who are committed to the well-being and success of their children. And in, in observance of this celebration, what we have already begun doing is, on August 1st, we hosted our fourth annual Street Fest celebration on East 17th Street. We did have permits to close the street down for a while. We had over 40 partner agencies who set up information tables, including Fatherhood, and I see that Mr. Grimes is here tonight in the audience, and Healthy Start, among many others, and we had a great crowd. And special thanks to Protective Services and Public Works that helped us set it all up. And if you'd like to see some photos, please check out our website. We also offer throughout the month of August, the Child Support Awareness Month, we, we offer our annual driver's license amnesty program, and you do have a flyer at each of your place settings. And in the first week, we have reinstated 85 driver's licenses and collected about $22,000. But, but beyond these numbers, the, the real purpose of the Amnesty Pro, Amnesty Program, where we're a bit more flexible, we're not using the standard criteria that we typically would use, the real purpose is to re-engage non-constodial parents who are not meeting their support obligation. And the intent is to work with them, try to get payments made, particularly sustained continuing payments over the next year or so. And last year, we had 467 participants in the driver's license amnesty program, and in the eight months prior to August 2010, that group paid about 249,000 in the, in the eight months post-August 2010, during that re-engagement phase with the agency, This year, we also added to the program a 20-minute educational seminar as part of the requirements to have the license reinstated. In that seminar, support officers explained the expectations of the parent and what the agency was looking to happen. But it was also, more importantly, an opportunity to, to make referrals to work programs such as passages and connections, and referrals to other social and legal programs as well. And the referrals are important because we know that those who are not paying often would like to pay, but there are underlying problems. There's unemployment, underemployment, there's parental conflict, there's legal needs. So we try to help the, the whole person, not just the obligor to that payment. We want to help parents improve their ability and willingness to support their children. And for those in the audience who may not know us all that well, the Cuyahoga Support Enforcement Agency has about 145,000 cases here in Cuyahoga County. We determine paternity, we establish support orders, we work closely with domestic relations and juvenile courts, and we collect support. And last year, 2010, $237 million was collected for Cuyahoga County children and families. So our purpose as an agency is to ensure that children in single-parent households have, have a reliable source of private financial and medical support. And as a final remark, just a thank you to the sponsors of this resolution tonight, county executive, Mr. Fitzgerald, Rick Werner, Director of the Department of Health and Human Services, as well as all my colleagues at the Cuyahoga Support Enforcement Agency, colleagues who I have found in the time I've been there to be very professional, passionate about what they do, and very innovative in their programs. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. K. And I think we were supposed to present you with the actual resolution, we may have had a glitch here, so we will get it to you first thing tomorrow morning, but thank you for the dedicated, on behalf of all the children of Cuyahoga County, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good night.
And we wish you a successful month.
Madam President?
Yes.
We went right into the amendment. Was there a motion made to adopt?
Um, withdraw, Madam President. Council Miller, Miller is correct, and I moved, and I'll withdraw that, and Councilman Rogers seconded that.
Okay.
Okay, so what, do we need to vote then on the amended?
Well, I think I need to withdraw my motion to adopt, which I'm doing now.
All right, so then do we need to vote again then on the amended, yes, on the amended resolution?
So now to adopt the amended resolution.
All right, seconded by Mr. Rogers. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, so congratulations, Mr. K. All right, item number 13. Yes.
Name of the sponsor also.
I will as well.
Okay, I think I will also, do you want, it's probably unanimous by council in support of this?
Yeah.
All right, we'll mark it as unanimous by council in support. All right, item 13, consideration of, consideration of a resolution for first reading adoption under suspension of the rules, Rules 9D and 12A. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I'll, I'll move to suspend the rules. Are we going to go into executive session, however? Okay, I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr., Ms. Simon and seconded by Mr. Miller. All, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item 0246.
Resolution number 2011-0246, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into a mutually agreed-to-dispute settlement procedure with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Ohio Council 8, and Local 1746, AFL-CIO, to extend the party's collective bargaining agreement through October 31, 2011, and for successive 10-day periods thereafter, unless either the county or ASME terminates said contract extension by providing at least five days' advance notice and writing, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Move to adopt?
All right, moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Conwell, and I would refer everyone to page 69 of the material, the actual mutual agreed-to-dispute settlement procedure is printed there. And I thought Mr. Morales was going to be here to give a brief explanation, and Mr. McCoof, did you want to do that?
No, I can, I can actually do that. No, this is basically the agreement that, to, under which we will conduct the negotiations with ASME, it's continuing the terms of the agreement that's already in place through the, the end of October, and setting the procedure for the negotiation process with the understanding, with the hope that it will be finished by the end of October. I can report to council that we did two things. We already agreed on the mediator, who will be present from the beginning through the federal mediation office, and number two, we selected the fact-finder and set a time period in which, if we reach an impasse, that we have a time, you know, the, the agreed timeline in which the fact-finder would go into the fact-finding procedure and have the outcome in place by October 24.
Are you in discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it. The resolution is adopted. Item 14, consideration of resolutions for first reading and referral to committee. Ms. Barnhill?
Resolution 2011-0247, a resolution declaring that public convenience and welfare requires repair and resurfacing of Madison Avenue from Riverside Drive to West 117th Street in the city of Lakewood. Total estimated construction cost $2,600,000, and authorizing the county
the county executive to enter into an agreement of cooperation with City of Lakewood in connection with said project.
At this mail, we refer to the Public Works Committee.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to ask that my name be added as a co-sponsor.
All right, item zero-two-four-eight.
Resolution 2011-0248, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an agreement in amount equal to the approved appraisal fair market value estimate of fifty-three-thousand seven-hundred-and-ten dollars for settlement of property rights in connection with replacement of Bel Air Road, Bridge Number Twenty-four, over Big Creek in the city of Cleveland and Village of Lindale for parcel numbers three S and three T, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Now refer to the Public Works Committee.
Resolution 2011-0249, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in amount of two-hundred dollars in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from SOM Center Road to Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for the parcel number one-twenty-three T, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Ms. Barnhill lives on the west side, at SOM Center.
Sorry, I'm from Dayton.
At this mail, we refer to the Public Works Committee.
That stands for Solon Orange Mentor, by the way.
The road that connects those three.
All right, item zero-two-five-zero.
Resolution 2011-0250, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in the amount of eight-thousand-six-hundred dollars in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from SOM Center Road to Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for parcel number five-eight-T, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Refer to the Public Works Committee. And Mr. Schrein would like to be a sponsor on Edison His District.
Resolution 2011-0251, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars in connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from SOM Center Road to the Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for parcel number seventy-five-T, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
I refer to the Public Works Committee. Item zero-two-five-two.
A resolution, excuse me, resolution number 2011-0252, a resolution authorizing the county executive to approve an additional settlement in the amount of five-hundred-and-ninety dollars in the connection with the appropriation of property rights for the grading, draining, and paving of Bainbridge Road from SOM Center Road to Solon East Corporation Line in the city of Solon for the parcel number fifty-nine-T, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
At this mail, we refer to the Public Works.
Resolution 2011-0253, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into real estate agreement number two-four-four-seven-five with Ohio Department of Transportation in the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars for partial reimbursement of right-of-way acquisition costs in connection with reconstruction of Ridge Road from Interstate Four Eighty to Memphis Avenue to the city of Brooklyn.
I refer to Public Works.
If you could add me as a sponsor.
Mr. Germana, Edison His District. Item zero-two-four-five-four.
Resolution 2011-0254, a resolution establishing charges payable for connection in the county sanitary sewer system and a portion of County Sewer District Number Thirteen in the city of Brexville, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
I refer to Public Works.
Resolution number 2011-0255, a resolution establishing a capital cost surcharge for construction of a pump station and sanitary sewer lines in Echo Hills subdivision located in County Sewer District Number Thirteen in the city of Brexville, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
I refer to Public Works.
Resolution 2011-0256, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of self-supporting housing revenue bonds in the amount not to exceed six million dollars for Peritas Avenue Associates for the purpose of rehabilitating, improving, and equipping a housing facility for low and moderate-income families, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, bond purchase agreement, trust indenture, and tax regulatory agreement, authorizing and approving the use and distribution of a disclosure document, approving related matters, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
At this mail, we refer to the Economic Development Committee.
Resolution 2011-0257, a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of self-supporting housing revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed five million dollars for Helen S. Brown Apartments for the purpose of rehabilitating, improving, and equipping a senior housing facility for low and moderate-income seniors, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement, bond purchase agreement, trust indenture, and tax regulatory agreement, authorizing and approving the use and distribution of a disclosure document, approving related matters, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
I refer to the Economic Development Committee.
President, I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
Rogers wants to be as a sponsor.
Resolution 2011-0258, a resolution authorizing an award on RQ Two Zero One Zero Nine to Tri-More Corporation in the amount of eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars for the Year Two Pavement and Maintenance Program, Apron A One B Reconstruction, and Apron A Two C D One Rehabilitation for the period August 9th, 2011 through June 6th, 2012, authorizing the county executive to enter into a contract consistent with said award, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
At this mail, we refer to the Economic Development Committee.
Resolution 2011-0259, a resolution authorizing awards on RQ One Nine Eight Six Eight to various providers for the Cuyahoga County Fatherhood Initiative for the period July 1st through 2011 through June 30th, 2012, authorizing the county executive to enter into contracts consistent with said awards, and then declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective for the providers in amounts listed on the agenda, item fourteen-M one through twelve.
At this mail, we refer to Health and Human Services.
Resolution...
I'd like to be added to that.
I'd like to be as a sponsor.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be added also.
Resolution number 2011-0260, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into amendments to contracts with various providers for placement services for the period July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2011, for additional funds, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective for the providers in amounts listed on the agenda, item fourteen-N one through five.
I refer to Health and Human Services.
Resolution number 2011-0261, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into amendments to contracts with various providers for placement services for the period January 1st, 2011 through June, excuse me, September 30th, 2011, for additional funds, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective for the providers in amounts listed on the agenda, item fourteen-O one through five.
At this mail, we refer to Health and Human Services. Item fifteen, committee reports and consideration of resolutions for second reading under adoption of Rule Nine D. Ms. Simon?
Madam President, I move to suspend the rules.
Moved by Ms. Simon, and seconded by Mr. Gallery. Any discussion on suspension of the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Item zero-two-three-eight.
Resolution number 2011-0238, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter an agreement with the city of Cleveland Heights in the amount not to exceed five-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-five-hundred dollars for lead hazard remediation for the period July 1st, 2011 through July 31st, 2014, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Rogers, and seconded by Ms. Simon. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Schrein?
Madam President, what this represents is, it represents fifty houses, I think, in the community that are being addressed by this. So it's, we've had, I think, phenomenal working relationship with the city of Cleveland Heights in regards to being able to take charge of this, and it's a, it's an excellent partnership between the county and the city of Cleveland Heights to be able to address this problem. Hopefully that, if I left something out in regards to that? Okay.
Any other discussion?
Here, I'd like to be added as a sponsor.
All right, Mr., you're already on there.
As a committee assignment.
Yeah, Mr. Rogers wants to be added as a sponsor. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the resolution adopted. Item zero-two-three-nine.
Resolution number 2011-0239, a resolution authorizing awards to various municipalities in a total amount of one-million-one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for various municipal grant projects for the neighborhood stabilization program for the period July 12th, 2011 through January 11th, 2013, and authorizing the county executive to enter into agreements consistent with said awards for the municipalities in amounts listed on the agenda, item fifteen-B one through five.
Moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Miller, and seconded by Mr. Schrein. Is there any discussion on this?
Madam Chair?
I just, during committee, I had asked for some additional information to be provided, and it was, so I'm very pleased about this resolution. Would also like to be added as a sponsor.
Like to be added as a sponsor.
Yeah, I'd like to be added as a sponsor. One of my cities, the city of Shaker Heights is receiving two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars.
And I'd like to be added also.
And Mr. Jones?
I would be remiss if I didn't add myself, seeing how that takes care of the five districts that were others.
Bedford is also mine, Bedford, Shaker Heights.
Madam President?
So it's Mr. Schrein, Ms. Simon?
Not adding my name. I just had a comment.
All right, go ahead.
Our district.
Can I speak to this? I just want to say that NSP fund applications were very competitive this year, and one of the cities which applied was the city of South Euclid, which submitted an application, and it was very competitive. But I just wanted to state that part of what South Euclid applied for was their Green Initiative Neighborhood Project, which is an innovative project where they purchase homes and they rehab them into green models. And the city's been doing this, and they just won a Crane's 2011 Emerald City Award, and the city was just awarded that. So I just wanted to speak to this, and there's so many good projects, but it didn't get the award, and I understand that the system of grading was subjective and fair. But I do want to say that South Euclid is an innovator with what they've been doing with these homes, and did win the Crane's Award.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the resolution adopted. Item zero-two-four-zero.
Resolution number 2011-0240, a resolution authorizing awards to various municipalities in a total amount of two-million-one-hundred-and-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars for various municipal grant projects for the Community Development Block Grant Program for the period July 1st, 2011 through December 31st, 2012, and authorizing the county executive to enter into agreements consistent with said awards for the municipalities in amounts listed on the agenda, item fifteen-C one through twelve.
Moved to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schrein, and seconded by Mr. Rogers. Is somebody from economic?
Jones.
Sorry.
We had this come before our committee, and I think that it might be worthy of having some presentation in regards to, because I think it is a monumental, a significant impact they're bringing forward.
Paul Hurtig with the Department of Development, on behalf of our entire staff, because it's not a one-person task to try to distribute this much money. Just very briefly recapping the testimony that Harry Conard of our staff gave to the committee. For a number of years now, we've been receiving funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development called Community Development Block Grant Funds. These funds are on behalf of fifty-one suburbs that have joined together by agreement to establish what's called an urban county. So we don't have this money on behalf of the larger cities. The larger cities, such as Cleveland, do receive their own money. But on behalf of the fifty-one smaller communities, there's money that comes every year. Part of our agreement with our member cities has always been to give back a percentage of the money directly to the cities. That percentage is forty percent. So we have, for many years now, I want to say about twenty years, made sure every year we give out at least forty percent of the allocation of block grant money to city projects. And we've been doing this for twenty years on a competitive basis. We've found that having a competition, which is open to all the cities with the rules put out in advance, and a hundred-point scoring system, does let cities focus on what they want to do. We've found over time that all cities that want to participate and really work at the applications have had some success. Obviously, they can't all succeed every year because it's a popular program. But our staff does work very hard to rate each application. They go visit all the sites, they read the applications in teams, they study them together, and they do score them. And so what you have before you is the recommendation from our staff this year of the ones that scored the highest, and we ask for your adoption.
Madam President.
Mr. Rogers?
Are there, of the fifty-one cities, are there any that have, in how many years have we been redistributing these funds?
Councilman, approximately twenty years on the competitive basis.
Are there any of the fifty-one cities that have never received?
There are, councilman. One of them, for example, would be the city of Gates Mills, which simply has not been able to tell us that they have such a great need in a low-income area that we would be able to give the money. There are some strings attached. The cities have to propose projects in either low-income areas or areas that are blighted. And, for example, a few of the wealthier communities have never been able to bring us a project. But barring those extreme examples, we've been in Solon, we've been in, you know, we've been in Mayfield Heights, we've been on the west side. We do have a group of about twenty-two communities that are frequent participants, that almost every year bring us something. So there is a tendency to concentrate on about twenty-two to twenty-five. These are generally the communities that are maybe inner-ring suburbs, or have situations where they have weaker parts of the community.
Right, thank you.
All right, any other questions, discussions?
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I just wanted to make a comment about, one of the things I don't think the county has historically done a very good job with is that when we, when we fund projects, sometimes we're kind of like almost a silent funder of those projects, and it hurts our ability to tell people what county government does and how we partner with local communities. So I just want, I want to let the council know that as this money is actually expended, whether it's on a road project, or the NSP money, or whatever the case may be, we are trying to do a better job of publicizing that so that there's, there's an event or a ribbon-cutting or something of that nature when this money is actually spent, so people know what some of these funds are going for. And our job is to include the members of the council and your, that represent those districts. So there's a lot of those things that are going to start happening this fall as projects are completed, whether it be on road projects or on these matters, and we'll be notifying council members about that as timely as we can. Nicole Daly-Jones, who does our communications work, sometimes has had difficulty from individual cities as far as them letting her know when the projects are completed, but we'll try to get you that information as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution adopted.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Like to be added as a sponsor.
Mr. Germana?
Madam Chair, I would as well.
Also, several. Want to put everyone on this one? No?
Yes, Madam Chair, you can add my name. Madam Chair, if my colleagues aren't aware, we have dialogued with the executive, and our names will appear on the road projects that are in our respective districts. So you will be seeing that as those projects come to pass.
All right, item zero-two-four-one. Are they going to use like extra ink for Parma?
Resolution number 2011-0241, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into an amendment to contract number CE One Zero 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 Five Eight Five-Dash-Zero-One with United Labor Agency Incorporated for Employment Connection Employer Services for the period July 1st, 2010 through June 30th, 2011, to extend the time period to June 30th, 2012, and for additional funds in the amount of one-million-two-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective.
Moved to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schrein, and seconded by Ms. Conwell. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, Madam President. You'll notice that this resolution and the subsequent one will... Madam President, you'll notice that this resolution and the subsequent one will have the funding going to the United Labor Agency in regards to, this one, though, is geared towards the employment connection as it relates to assessment, the second half will be, will going towards the employment connection as it relates to services, so two completely different parts of it, but you'll note that the naming is the same in the United Labor Agency, but they're for two completely different functions.
All right, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, please add my name as a co-sponsor for this resolution.
And Madam Chair, please add my name also.
Mr. Jones.
Madam Chair, I'll go on as well.
Mrs. City of Cleveland, you add my name also. Ms. Conwell. All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, resolution adopted. Item 0242.
Resolution number 2011-0242, a resolution authorizing the county executive to enter into amendments to contracts with various providers for employment connection, one-stop operation, and services to adult job seekers for the period July 1, 2010 through June 30, 2011, to extend the time period to June 30, 2012, and for additional funds, and declaring the necessity that this resolution become immediately effective for the providers in amounts listed on the agenda, item 15E, 1 through 3.
Move to adopt.
Moved by Mr. Schron and seconded by Mr. Greenspan, is there any discussion on this? Anybody wants to be added as a sponsor?
Madam Chair, you can add my name.
Jones, Mr. Brady, Mr. Miller, Connolly. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the ayes have it. Item 14, consideration of ordinances for first reading and referral to committee.
Ordinance number 2011-0037, an ordinance establishing the Department of Public Safety and Justice Services and amending ordinance number 2011-0027 to remove the animal shelter from the Department of Public Works and place it in the Department of Public Safety and Justice Services, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
This now refer to both the Justice Affairs and Public Safety Committee, and Justice Affairs will be the lead committee on it.
Ordinance number 2011-0038, an ordinance providing for the adoption of various changes to the Cuyahoga County Non-Bargaining Classification Plan, and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
I just now refer to Human Resources. Item 17, committee report in consideration of an ordinance for second reading adoption under suspension of the rules, Ms. Simon.
President, I move on the rules.
Second.
All right, moved by Ms. Simon, seconded by Mr. Gallagher, any discussion on suspension of the rules? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the rules are suspended.
Ordinance number 2011-0033, an ordinance establishing procedures for authorization of settlement of litigation by or against the county or any of its officers, employees, departments, offices, agencies, boards, commissions, or other authorities, and amending ordinance number 2011-0030 to harmonize it with the provisions of this ordinance and declaring the necessity that this ordinance become immediately effective.
Move to adopt.
By Ms. Simon and seconded by Ms. Conwell, did you want to be heard on this, Ms. Simon?
Thank you, Madam President, yes, this matter ordinance was heard in the Justice Affairs Committee last Friday, and basically what it does is it gives the authority to the executive to settle litigation, civil litigation, up to $100,000, which the committee found to be reasonable considering that that's not that high considering the cost of litigation on these days, so we're not abdicating, you know, oversight to any extent, however, there's a few exceptions, I'm not going to get into detail, but that amount will, the threshold lowers when it's an eminent domain case, however, we're never going to see matters of small purchases for easements and roads, and the example of that is what we saw tonight when we had several matters going to committee for $200 in that context, so that will go through a different channel, it's not significant amounts of money, and it would really tie things up, and part of that will go to, when it gets higher up, it will go into the Board of Control process, so we always have the ability to take a look at what's happening, so that's what the ordinance states, and the committee did find it reasonable.
All right, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the ayes have it, the resolution is, the ordinance is adopted.
I want to add my name to that.
All right, Ms. Simon, Mr. Miller. All right, are there any miscellaneous committee reports? Mr. Miller.
Madam Chair and my colleagues, the Finance and Budgeting Committee will meet this coming Monday, the 15th, at 1:00, and the two items on the agenda will be the Fiscal Accountability Ordinance that was introduced by Councilman Greenspan, and also the Two-Year Budget Ordinance. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Schron.
Thank you, Madam President, you know, the Economic Development Committee will be meeting in two weeks from yesterday, and will be discussing, in addition to the items that were referred to, but the main item will be the discussion of the new contract and construction reform legislation, of which there will be significant items that will be discussed as far as how we build that legislation as it goes forward, and I think that it'll be a very interesting process whereby we're going to hear points of view from various different constituencies within the construction area. As a second item, Madam President, I would ask that on the buildings that we just referred to as far as the study from the county executive that are within, and you referred this to Public Works, I would ask that we refer to or consider referring it to economic development as a joint, because ultimately, I believe that when some of those buildings ultimately are decided upon, that they're not going to be in service, the next step is going to be economic development as to what you do with that building, how we process it and consideration as far as how we sell it or repatriate it into some other form within the county, so I would ask that that would at least be considered to come before economic development also.
Anything else?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, which resolution were you referring to?
It was the study, I believe, that was going to come forth from the county executive as to the buildings that are within the county property, I don't believe that it was, it was a discussion point, and asked that we would have held that as a joint committee, because ultimately, as soon as we decide that maybe a building is not going to be used as far as continuing as county property, then it's still county property that has to be sold off, and perhaps there's an economic development fit there some point down the road.
Well, there's certainly, if I may, Madam Chair, there's a, it's impossible, there's a budgetary impact, there's a workflow impact, but it's also part of an economic strategy for, especially for downtown area, but also other areas. I mean, we had at the, as the council president knows, the building that we have on the east side in the Mount Pleasant area, that we have talked about whether or not we were going to scale down or whether we were going to move out of that building, that's part of their economic plan, so a lot of these building use questions have an impact, maybe not on a county-wide strategy, but certainly it has a local economic development impact, it's impossible to separate it from that, so it would be appropriate.
And as for that reason, I would ask that it would be a joint committee presentation, and I'm sure that the members of the Economic Development Committee would like to be at that same presentation, so if we can find a common time that would make sense, I mean, we've even had early discussions about the county building itself and how that might look in coordination with our new Medical Mart and Convention Center and how that logically is going to fit into economic development. Thank you.
Mr. Germana.
Thank you, Madam Chair, as I stated in the work session today, the Intergovernmental Relations and Collaboration Committee is going to be hosting with the Northeast Ohio City Council's Association a forum that's going to be on the six-year reappraisal and the developments and improvements we made to the board revision. We have Mr. Steen and Mr. Murphy that are going to be speaking to the Northeast Ohio City Council's Association, will be inviting the council members to our meeting room here, and that's going to be on September 15 at 7:00.
And as I indicated earlier, Mr. Gallagher and I were at the county fairgrounds last night, and we're very interested in promoting the fair, and we met with Mr. Stan Trupo, who's in charge of the fair, and they're already planning for next year, and we just like really kind of get a handle on it because it's part of the county that I hadn't really been that familiar with, and see what we can do to help them out and do some things with the land out there, get more people out there, so I look forward to that, work with Mr. Gallagher on that project. All right, any other miscellaneous committee reports, any other miscellaneous business?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Germana.
I'd just like to report that a week ago on Monday, the city of Parma Council had a work session concerning the flooding, and we did have representatives from Caga County Public Works, and they did an excellent job presenting, you know, it was overflow 500 person crowd, but the Public Works people, Mr. Diver and so on, did an excellent job.
Thank you.
Madam...
Mr. Rogers, did you want to respond?
No, I was just going to, you know, I should have mentioned this when I started, you may have read in the paper today, but Rocco Colonna, who's a former state representative, a member of the Liquor Control Board for the state, and just a great, down-to-earth public servant, has passed away recently, his funeral is this week, his son, Danny, is a county employee, and for those of you that know the family, that you know how this is going to affect them, he was a great guy and a great civic leader in the Brook Park area, so I just wanted to ask you to keep him in your thoughts, and the Colonna family in your thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Rogers?
I just wanted to call attention to our Economic, Environment and Sustainability Committee, and join session with the Justice Affairs Committee met last Friday, we invited the members of the Cleveland Heights City Council, and we discussed the issue of, it's been dubbed flash mobs, and it met for a very interesting conversation, so I encourage people to check out our website if you're interested in that issue, if you want to see some of the things that the county is doing in respect to the issue and what the city of Cleveland Heights has done specifically, I encourage everyone to check that out on our website.
Thank you.
Madam President, just to remind everyone, the Justice, the Public Works Committee meeting is this Thursday at 11:00, and we will discuss the items referred today.
All right, any other miscellaneous business? What about public comment unrelated to the agenda? Did anyone sign in? Is anyone wanting to make public comment? All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All right, second, all those in favor, aye, aye, me stands adjourned.